All right. I'd like to call this first meeting on the Pots Grove School Board for August into order. And we'll go ahead and get started with the federal leaders.
The United States of America, the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberation of us all.
So the secretary will note the role. We have seven people here and one on the phone. No, he's not. Did I have him reach him yet? Okay. I'll leave my last. We're still waiting for you. I will. Thank you. All right. So we'd like to start with an announcement that we did have an executive session just prior to this meeting and explains our five minutes late, so apologize for that. But that takes us right into public comment. Do we have any applications for comment?
Just for the record, I'll just note that that executive session dealt with a litigation matter and consulting with counsel on that matter.
I asked. I'm looking to see if anybody wants to. We'll take volunteers. No? Okay. All right. Then moving on.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes, we recommend to approve the monthly board action minutes for June 12, 2018 as submitted.
Okay. We have motion in a second. Do we have any comments or questions?
It will turn off.
All right. Having no questions or comments, a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Move. Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
I move that we ratify the payments of invoices in that $7,801,400. Let's start this over again. $7,801,404.22 for June 2018 as presented.
Do we make a motion to combine June and July? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the granny awards? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for June and July of 2018 as presented and file it for audit.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Okay. Thank you for bearing with me. Report of the superintendent action items, I'd like to make note to the board that we've had some changes to this. The professional staff resignation, 8.3. And the person is Toni Crater. We're going to remove her from the list. Just wanted to make, please make note of that. 8.3 professional staff resignations, Toni Crater will be removed. And then when we get to 8.4, we will also remove Karen Weaver. Karen Weaver. So I wanted to make that note before we voted on those particular areas. Dr. Hardy, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Moving on to 8.1, administrative staff resignations. We'd like to recommend that you approve the administrative staff resignation as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 8.1 through 8.13 with the two changes that Dr. Scherf had made.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
What was the second name, Dr. Scherf?
Weaver.
Just one quick comment is I'd like to wish Dr. Mays Coleman every happiness in her retirement and well deserved. We'll miss her. So there being no other questions or comments, I guess we'll ask for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for business, 9.1 settlement agreement and release. We ask the board and recommend authorization of a confidential settlement agreement and release for one student.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 9.1 through 9.11.
9.1 to 9.11, Mr. Leach.
We have a motion and a second to approve 9.1 through 9.11. Does anyone have any questions or comments? If no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Very good. Thank you.
Moving on to 9.12, Montgomery County Community College dual enrollment, dual credit program. We ask the board to approve this memorandum of agreement with Montgomery County Community College for its dual credit program.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Looking through this procedure, you mentioned that you're providing transportation, as I recall, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 8:00 AM classes only. Is that the only time classes are offered or is that just the only case you will be providing transportation?
Dr. Ziegler, can you help us out with that? Mr. Nipper's question.
Yes, students can take courses anytime throughout the day. We do provide a bus for that time slot to allow students to take courses who can't get transportation. But courses can be taken anytime throughout the day.
Okay. Along that line, if I look at this in the section, you have courses to be taught by approved high school teachers. The teachers that are being supplied are from the school district or are they teachers that MCQ is supplying?
So courses that are taught on Pots Grove High School campus are taught by Pots Grove High School teachers that have a master's degree in that area of content.
Okay. And how much contact time do you anticipate the MCQ faculty to be providing in these courses?
Typically, the courses are three credits or 45 hours.
Of which, how much is, how much of the teaching is supplied by the faculty from the community college?
So a student can make a choice whether they want to have the course on the campus of the high school, and if it is, it's completely taught by us, and if it's taught at the college campus, it's completely taught by the college staff.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. This makes things a little more clear in my mind. So if the student is attending at the campus, he's going to be taught by a Montgomery County faculty member. If he's taught here, he's going to be taught by a high school teacher.
That is considered Montgomery County faculty.
Yeah.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That answers, that answers all my questions.
That being the case, are there any further questions or comments?
I have one other question in regards, probably Dr. Ziegler, as in to have some of the other colleges been contacted and possibly working something with them, maybe Alvernia, Penn State Berks, or Sinus, anything, are we in talks with any of them to try to work something out with them as well?
Yes, we are currently investigating two different programs, one with Pitt and one with Penn State right now. We're looking into.
Okay. Third time. Are there any more questions or comments on this issue? No. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
It's a long couple days.
But you're still an aye, yes?
I'm still an aye.
Okay. All right.
Moving on. 9.13, the middle school roof replacement project. We ask the board to ratify the payment of an invoice for the Pots Grove Middle School Roof Replacement Project as presented.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on this contract?
Yeah. Quick question as in regards to are we at the point where we are complete for the school year? And the second question is going to be are we on budget for what we had originally planned?
We are on budget. Pardon me. We do have some things we want to discuss with you later on about some problems we uncovered with the bridge entrance. The roof is on target to be completed if it stops raining in the next month. It's 85 to 90% done. It just needs, we need a couple sunny days to wrap that up. The bridge will take a little bit more, more time to work on.
When is the bridge coming to us? Because we need the bridge.
We're going to, we're going to talk about that later. So if just...
In this meeting?
In this meeting, yes. And yes, we are on budget. The other thing I want to point out here is this contract offers a 2% discount for paying within 10 days. We took advantage of that, so that saved us $21,500 approximately on this first payment. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that again at the next payment and save, save another $25,000-ish.
One question I had is we did this through the MCIU and the arrangement with their consortium, yes?
This was through KPN, Keystone Purchasing Network. Yes.
What has your experience been so far with this contract?
I'll defer to Mr. Cardwell on that because I think he has some pretty strong opinions.
The process has been smooth compared to our other project. The group, US Roofing, very professional. They use some of the newest technology for the roof services self, using a tanker, nine a kettle and things like that. And as Mr. Nestor stated, pretty much the white base is dominantly put on the roof. We're having issues with the capping due to the rain and lightning. We don't want people working with metal at that time. But it's been a pleasant relationship having, where you work with one prime compared to multiple ones. It cuts out all the finger pointing and things. So it's moved along very, very decently.
Would you want to do this again in this order?
I would definitely say if we are going to look at other roofs, this would be the process to go where all the design, project management, construction management, all done through the KPN. It's basically, the district goes in our weekly meetings, we recap over anything, any issues we may have or they may have, they're addressed right there, solidified, and we move on with the process. So it is a very good way to move forward.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right. So ordered without objection.
Thank you. Looking at 9.14 sponsorship agreement, we ask the board to approve the sponsorship agreement with Ms. Shock Physical Therapy for the 1819 year as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on this issue?
Can we get it updated on the balance in the Market Street? Yeah. Thank you, Dave.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items regarding policy, we ask the board to approve the policies as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. I wonder if anybody has any questions or comments on this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you.
Moving on to number 11, action items regarding miscellaneous. We ask the board to accept the resignation of Diane Cherco for the Pots Grove Recreation Citizens Board membership.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on this issue?
Do we have a replacement nominee?
Actually, I'm sorry. Actually, I'm on the board. I've been on the board.
No, we don't need a replacement.
No. And I'll have a little report in our new business.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Moving on to number 12, committee items. We ask the board to accept the minutes of the Policy Board Committee meeting on, it was meeting was held on May 22, 2018 as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions on this issue? Nobody. Okay. I wonder why everybody wants to get through this order so fast. If there are no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection.
As we move to new business, the district does have several items we'd like to share with the board if you would allow us to start, to kick this piece off, and then that would, that would help us with, you know, moving things along. So, Mr. Nestor, could I start with you, please?
Earlier this week, I emailed you some information, or actually last week, some information. I've met with CMD, our transportation contractor, to negotiate the agreement for the upcoming school, or for this coming school year next week. I provided some, a summary of the information in your, in the email I sent to you, essentially looking for a 2% to 3% increase in the salary levels of their, their various staff. Some of the items that are on there were above 3%, but those are items that we do not typically utilize. So they're there in case, but, you know, we've, we haven't used them in probably 10 years or more. So if the board's in agreement with what I've been able to negotiate at this point in time, we'll put this on the next agenda for approval, but I just wanted to get some feedback from you before we went in that direction.
Well, I'm hearing no objections. I know, I thought, I thought that the agreement made sense to me, the way it was presented. I was happy with that. And I would request that you do go ahead and go forward unless anybody has an objection.
No, I agree.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep. The next item, I guess, is some information on the middle school project. So I'll ask Mr. Cardwell to come up and talk about this.
In early January of 2018, we experienced a failure with the undermining soffit work of the middle school bridge. We, we, in a district and engineering firm that we hired, did an investigation into snow, looked at things, came up with a plan for repair of removing two blocks of concrete where the failure was noted with the soffit. Fast forward to where we are now, we actually opened the bridge up and found out that where the, where the three drains are located on the bridge has allowed for condensation and moisture to penetrate the steel decking and the concrete that lies on top of it. The bridge itself is made with eight-inch concrete and rebar. About three inches of the concrete that sits on top of the steel decking, well, it's eight inches, but the three inches close to the steel decking, has basically turned back to Portland sand. So the entire concrete decking has to be removed and replacement of the steel waffle board decking as well. I would recommend that we pour the concrete back to eight inches. It was designed for a service vehicle to be able to drive up to the front doors in event of emergency. The engineer has two offers. You could pour it back at four inches, but it would not support the weight of the vehicle. And with the school being at its age, I wouldn't change that. We might have an accident where someone, hey, I knew in 1999 I could drive on this bridge and they take that action now. So I would ask the board if, for permission for us to move forward with the full replacement of the concrete decking and redesign of the drains. We would not put three drains, the type that were in there, trough drains. We would go back to working out something, maybe a typical four-inch center drain, almost like in a floor with the concrete tapered to that area. Another issue, and tomorrow we're going to work on this, we found out as well, the sidewalk coming from the parking lot to the bridge is not, it's tapered more as in a valley, I shouldn't say valley, excuse me, a hill-type fashion with a crown, I'm trying to say. So some of the water that should be sheeting off to the driveway is actually sheeting back towards the bridge as well. So that has caused for ample amount of rust right at the beginning of the bridge moving into the school. So that was not, we're looking at possibly tearing out that concrete as well. That was not a part of the original proposal or anything, but as we went through this investigation, we found more issues possibly, as well as one of the steel supporting girders. Now that the snow was gone and the engineer came back, we found ample amount of rust around one of the steel supporting girders. So we want to dig around that to ensure that it's sitting on the concrete footing and port properly. I won't have pricing until our meeting tomorrow and a farther final report of saying this is the overall plan for repairing it. But we know the action right at hand right now is we have to pour an entire new concrete decking on the bridge itself.
Do you have an estimate as into what they're going to possibly do? Because my personal opinion is to not wait two more weeks to even come back, which I'm 99.9% sure we're going to approve anyway because we have to have the bridge. I'd like to start it as soon as possible. Is there a way we could say, up to this number, you're approved?
I would say to, looking at everything I just told you, if we add in a sidewalk and hopefully there's nothing more than superficial rust on the supporting steel girder, I would take that number to not exceed 35,000. And that's on a higher, and I originally told Dave, I think 2025 will be it, but with not knowing for sure with the steel girder and the pavement piece there, when I gave Dave the price of 2025, those were before I knew about those two issues. So I would play it safe at if we move forward not to exceed 35,000 or otherwise come back to the board if it's more than that.
Bob, you're the engineer. Any issues with that?
Short answer is no. I think 35,000 will cover basically what you've described. I don't know the full extent of the sidewalk that you're taking out, but that's relatively cheap. The only thing I would ask is when you're talking about replacing the concrete over the top of the deck, are you going to be replacing the deck as well? Yes, the metal deck too as well. Okay. Thank you very much. And what is the, is the engineer recommended a change in the deck or is he going with the same deck? Well, he did recommend the same deck, but what he did note that was an issue, one is we're not going back with the heating elements. The heating elements were put on the bottom of the bridge instead of up, of the concrete instead of towards the top, and as well as the rebar was put up in the first two inches of the concrete instead of midway. So obviously, his guidelines is don't put the bridge back that way, the concrete there. But he definitely recommend if we are going to use it for vehicle transportation on there, rebar back in, eight inches of concrete, same type of metal decking. I forget all the details to it, but the metal decking is actually a supportive metal decking as well to carry a weight load for the thickness of the metal decking.
So is it a three or six inch deep metal deck?
The decking, Mr. Winger...
I'm sorry. You've got an engineer, I guess I'm not going to re-engineer it on the fly here, but I was just, I was just curious, as a matter of...
It's about an inch. What really supported most of the weight is the eight inches of the concrete with the rebar. If I answer, if I heard you right there. I'll take that answer. Okay. Okay. So I think we're good. Yes, I'm fine with that. The girder scares me just a little bit, but that 35,000 will get you a long ways. How about that?
Between the contracting it out, removal, replacement, and then inspection and everything, how long do you have any timeline of how long we'll be without that?
So we already have a contractor there. So Halc Services had, they're, were contracted under the roofing project to do all the structural repairs. All the structural repairs are done. If we get approval tonight, this may be completed, whether, working in our favor, a two to three week timeframe. So it's not going to drag into the middle of the school year. We also had a commitment from the contractor that the demo, they would start at 3 o'clock when school's over. So jackhammering the concrete out now is not going to interfere with the educational process.
Since they inspected the structural part of the bridge, I'm guessing they did, but they checked to make sure for the connections of the bridge itself onto the building to make sure that those are sound. And the other question I have is you mentioned that the sidewalk is crowning. Was it designed that way or are we looking at possibly erosion or something else going on underneath the sidewalk that could be causing issues down the road so that while they're there, to take care of that?
So I just want to clarify one thing. We, we hired engineers, so Halc was only following the direction of the engineer that we hired, and that part, yes. So all the connections, the bolts and everything are fine with there. The concrete pavement, it was port in that fashion, crowned this way. It's a drain at the beginning of the bridge, so the engineer is assuming the individuals were looking at crowning back towards the drain, more or less looking at the grade and everything should have sheeted out to the driveway itself. So that's where it's more of a fix of a jackhammering out several concrete blocks and just pouring the, since we're replacing the bridge, everything would just be poured in that, that angle out towards the, towards the driveway.
Yeah, I was just out there this weekend and looked at it. How much of the sidewalk are you planning on removing that's falling right at the seam to the bridge is extremely bad and would at very least have to be patched, but taking it out is a better solution?
For that reason too as well. So we're looking at approximately, like I said, we have more of a definite tomorrow. It may be going out eight feet, two blocks, two, two blocks in a sense in the width of the bridge. Forget that, but you know, it's roughly about...
12 feet.
12 feet. Oh, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
If no one has any more questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve up to $35,000 for the replacement of the bridge or fixing.
We have a motion in a second. Does anyone else have any, any questions? All right, this being an item of new business that we're taking action on tonight, I would like to see if there's any public comment on this repairs. Nobody? Okay, very good. There being no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Very good.
Thank you, appreciate that go ahead there. I think it's obviously, it's a need. And Mr. Cardwell, thank you and Mr. Nestor for.
One more. Sorry.
I knew that. I'm thanking you for one thing. That's all, not two things.
The next item, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation today, that we are putting is still capping, the aluminum capping around the building. When we presented this renovation at the, to the board early on through our capital project, it was decided that we wouldn't do painting of the steel girders of the lower level right underneath the capping. Now seeing the capping going on, I strongly would like to paint the steel girders. The vendor, the contractor's doing some painting now. It's a double-layer steel girder. So, the upper layer is being capped and painted. The level right underneath there, we didn't consider that as a part of the roof structure when we approved this. So, I just think to give it a complete look, we should move forward with that. And then as well, the bridge, the railings are being painted down to the pavement, but then you have about 60 feet, 80 feet of railing along the sidewalk. I would make a recommendation that we should just paint all of the railing there so it could be a complete look compared to the bridge having brand-new railings painted. But then when you drive up to the bridge, you have 60-foot of railing that is black and gray compared to the brand-new gray painted bridge. We do have a price with that. We put the painting on hold as well until this meeting tonight. And the reason why is the painters, if we moved forward with them starting painting two weeks ago and waited, they would have been finished. We would have to pay more for them to come back to set up everything. So, we held off on that. And I explained to Dr. Shirk and Mr. Nestor, I didn't think that would be an issue if we opened the building up and, you know, someone's on a scaffold painting the outside of the steel girders. So, I don't have the exact number, Dave, I'm not sure if you have. I know it was 18.5 or 18.9 to paint the entire perimeter of the rooftop second girder of the school and the 60-foot of railing there out front. So, I would ask, because I don't have the exact numbers with me at hand, if the board will allow this, that part to move forward with approval not to exceed $19,000, just to complete that. And we, the painting of the steel girders, we were going to do that in another phase of the construction project. So, it wasn't left out. We were phasing that for another year or two now in the line. But like I said, just the aesthetics of it, I would prefer to move it forward now.
One quick question. The railing that goes down along the side that you're talking about painting, I think there's a stairwell or a stairway that goes down on the backside that also has railing.
Yes, that's included.
That's included.
Yeah, so it goes down the front, down the steps.
As for another 15 feet to be painted. Okay, fair enough. That being, that being said, I was a little bit off by estimate when you told me what it was. I was thinking about 15 grand, but yeah, 18 is right in the ballpark, so happy days with that. So, I have no issues with it myself. Anybody else?
The girders you're talking about are the girders on the bridge or?
So, the railings up top, so.
Yeah, railings are, yeah, but you mentioned girders.
No, so if you look at the top of, it's hard to see them because they're capped off, but at the roof level, there's a lot of steel that goes around. And we made a decision just to do the ones that were connected, associated with the roof, not coming down into the structure.
You're not talking about the girders on the bridge?
That would be painted too, but no, this one is up on the roof level.
Much later.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to include the painting of up to $19,000.
Very good, we have a motion in a second. And like the last time, does anybody else have any questions here? And our public comment, does anybody in the audience have any questions they'd like to ask about this? Comments, comments are fine too? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
Mr. Cardwell, anything else? Thank you, and I know we're going to go back to Dave. Something, total change of pace here, okay? We're not looking for anything. I want to let you know that we had a big upgrade to our computer system this year, a large lease that we took out for the high school computers. The technology department did a very good job this year. They found a vendor to buy our old equipment. And we've received a check for $135,000 for our four-year-old iPad. So, that's significantly more than we have ever gotten before and more than we had even dreamed we would get for something like that. So, I just wanted to give you some good news for a change.
Out of curiosity, is that somebody we can go to again when the next round go up to be sold off?
That would be the plan.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a once and done, like just a free chance that they needed them and they would never need them again, or?
Okay, good, that's nice. Well done, thank you.
So, Dave has helped us save $135, plus 21 by paying a bill early. So, Dave's up about 150 for the year. So, I think that's, that's a good thing, it's only August. So, I think that's, that's positive. Yeah, thank you there for your work. I just wanted to share, I mean, the board supported us last spring when we really wanted to fill void with community relations and co-curricular activities. We really felt there was a lot of things that were hanging out that we just didn't have supervised or there wasn't a person in charge of. And obviously, this, this summer has been transition for Gary D'Renzo. And he and I have met on several occasions. We'll continue obviously to do more to, to have a focus. But I wanted to share some of the things that have gone on since, since really July 1st under the community rela-, I'm going to break it down into some different categories. The community relations piece, the Freedom Valley Y has agreed to allow us to practice back at the Pottstown YMCA for this year for 2018-19. The contract for 18-19 season is $8,600, and that's $637 less than, than in the past. So, we don't have any home meets there yet, but obviously that'll be something to look, to look at there. Miss Shock Physical Therapy has agreed to yet another year extension for the sponsorship of our high school tennis courts. This will include the annual halftime extra point competition and the half-court shot and winter basketball as well for, as well. Also, Chief Foltz and Chief Wheatley and Chief Soflett have agreed to be our official honorary captains for our opening football game to honor our people who serve Military Night and our service people. So, I think, you know, the relationships that we've had with those three and their departments really in the last six to eight months with our, our Safe Schools Committee as well as, you know, our active shooter training has, has brought that group closer together. So, I think that's something that, you know, we look forward to and really honoring them as well. Co-curricular programs this fall, the fall of 2018, we begin to establish the template for the, the new additional, a non-athletic programs in Games 3D8. Obviously, if you remember, you graciously gave us 25,000 more dollars to create co-curricular activities in grades three through eight. So, we started to establish that template. We're also going to meet with the faculty first months of school to provide information on how we start those clubs and activities. We also have made some, several supplemental changes to our, to our, our current co-curricular programs. One of the things that we've, we've done in the past is always really meet and discuss what clubs and activities are being used and what are not. And if there's new clubs to create, we take that money and funnel in that direction. So, that, that occurred as well. So, and one of the things, before I get to the Maxme piece that I'd like Mr. D'Renzo to share, another thing as far as the fund development piece and under this, under this director, ROG Orthodontics began a new sponsorship this summer on stadium press box and will also provide an additional $250 for the mission for our first responder Military Night as well. So, that, that's something positive under the fund development piece. And last but not least for me, the educational foundation that has, has been, you know, really non-existent and it's something we really want to establish and bring back pride. The fall of 18, we will configure the Educational Board Foundation again. So, that's going to be one of the first things that we're going to tackle. And we're going to look to reward five mini-grants right out of the gate in 2018. Like we, we want to let our, our faculty and staff people know that there is money available and we want to get that back in the flow of things as creating mini-grants as well. And we also will, will look at finalizing that template mid-September as well. So, I wanted to let you know, those are some things in the works, you know, and obviously, you know, I'm excited to have someone look after these things that really have been left aside. And Mr. D'Renzo has gotten, gotten out of the gate pretty, pretty fast for us. We'll continue to update you. Mr. D'Renzo, if you would just share this booklet with you, with us, on the publication that, The Walk on the Wild Side, if you will.
Thank you. I just want to share this, this was at the end of the year. So, every year, we talk about Market Street money and what does it go for. One of those, one of those pieces is that they fund this, the printing of this. About three years ago, Mrs. Caldwell, who's the advisor for Maxme, came to me and said, we do this artwork and poetry and literary works for our, our students, but we put it all online. So, they never really had a, you know, a tactile piece to take away almost as a portfolio. So, we did go to our co-curricular committee and ask for dollars to be able to fund these types of projects. And like I said, you guys don't get to see this because it's at the end of the year. And I just wanted to bring, there's 10 booklets here, so I'm going to pass these out. And really what it is, is it's the culmination of their work for the year. And what we did was, we made sure, and really, we is Mrs. Caldwell, each of the students that contributed, whether their artwork, poetry, anything in, in the booklet, they each got a copy to take with them. And then we had additional copies that are, that are printed to hand out. But I think this is a really nice reflection of our kids' work. And again, it's the culmination of the year, comes out the end of the summer. And I didn't want it to go overlooked because I think it's a tremendous, a tremendous booklet of, and it shows our kids' work. So, that's, that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
We used to do this before, didn't we?
We did.
We did, and then it dropped?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Funding became a problem, et cetera. So, we, like I said, we tried to find alternative sources and Market Street's been a good steward for that. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like, I'd like to thank the board for letting us get a few, few items and bringing them to your attention here tonight. So, I pass it back to Mr. Ling.
That's fair. All right, so last night we had the opportunity. Please.
I'm sorry, I have one little quick announcement. I attended the Pots Grove Recreation Board, which I've been attending. And I just want to give a little report. There was 140 children, 86 from Rocks, 54 from West. Their numbers are down a little bit. And Jill Ludi, who's been doing this for nine years, resigned her position. So, talking to like Gary, we're going to try to find ways to rebuild this in a fresh idea, come up with a mission statement to continue this, but think outside the box a little bit, hire a new director. So, I'll be working hard with them to come back to you with ideas because this, this program is for all the students for the summer and actually for all year. So, I just want to thank Jill Ludi for giving all her time for nine years.
Does anybody else have any new business? All right. Last night we were very fortunate to have five applicants for the position, the vacant position here on the board. And we got to speak with them and it was, it was a very good exchange of ideas. And I wanted to first ask the board, as a result of that, we, we all thought it would be best if we took a little bit of time and thought about our decision, thought about the information and see where we, where we were tonight. So, that's the first order of businesses. Are people in a position, do the majority of the board feel they're in a position to make a vote tonight? To reach a consensus, yes? On the fence a little?
By the time we get to, I'm sure.
All right.
Mr. Parker?
Did you just call me?
Yes. Are you in a position to make, are you, are you in a position?
I'm sorry, I can't hear everybody. I did hear Bob, I am in a position to vote if everybody else is yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. That being the case, if we're going to be doing this and we're going to be talking about this, I think we need to set out some ground rules about how the voting will take place and how we, how the discussions and deliberations will take place. I would like to encourage a freewheeling discussion of how people, you know, what people's thoughts are and what they want to do. If there's not much discussion, we can move right into voting. Please correct me if there's anything I'm saying that's out of whack. What I think, do you have a suggestion? Go ahead, please.
Question's going to be, do we have to nominate someone to vote on them or are we voting on all five?
There is no specified procedure regarding the filling of a board vacancy. The, the only requirement is that the person to be appointed must receive a majority of the remaining members, which would be a majority of eight, so you only need five votes. Depending on, you know, if there's a consensus candidate, you can make a motion to appoint that person. If not, you know, one way it's occurred is you all have a roll call vote and you state the person whom you're voting for. If there's not, if no one receives five votes, you eliminate one or more of the lowest, you know, the persons receiving the lowest votes and have a, a second vote. So, there's all, any number of ways of doing it, depends on where you are following your discussion as to whether or not there's a consensus candidate.
I think that way makes a good deal of sense and we can just do that and we'll just eliminate one or more. I, I think a reasonable thing is if an individual gets no votes, that would be an obvious elimination. And the question would be the, whether we want to have an elimination at one vote and just get people with multiple votes on the first round. Not sure how that would work out because you might still end up with five at the end of that. So, do people have a strong feeling either way?
The only thought or comment I'd say is, do we maybe just want to get a, for general fill for where everyone is right now so we don't spend 20 minutes or an hour deliberating to find out, oh, yeah, we all agreed, which I doubt will happen, but on the off chance. It could snow.
That's fine, that's, that's a fine way to go. So, in that case, do we want to just have the roll call vote like they talked about and start there? Or do you want to have a discussion?
Well, we do the roll call vote and then see where everyone's at and then discuss based on how many we have.
Okay. In this case then, what I would suggest that we do is each member of the board will be asked to vote on the one candidate that they felt was their, their most preferred. And we'll just see where we are at that point and move forward from there.
So, this is just about to see where we are, not to?
It is not a final vote, it's just to see where we are and what the different opinions are.
I'm having trouble hearing everybody. So, we're talking about doing a roll call vote on who we would vote for and see if we have a majority that way, correct?
Yes, that is correct. I would think the secretary would tally.
Tally, okay.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Parker, you have the honor, sir.
All right, I'll vote for Mark Johansson.
Very good, Mark Johansson. Doc Nibber.
Okay. I'll vote for Mark Jorgensen.
Right. No, it's Jorgensen, I believe. So we're going to use that name.
That's what, that's what.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Very direct.
Very good. Ashley?
Tina McIntyre.
Al Churchon.
First, I would like to thank all five candidates. I thought they were all fantastic. Really, it's very difficult to pick one out of the five. The only reason I picked this particular person is because, looking at each skillset, knowing each skillset that goes around, this particular person had a skillset we don't currently have. So that's the only reason I picked the person. Tina McIntyre.
And I will vote for Mark Johansson.
All right. So that's, very good. And on this round, I will also vote for Rick Rabinowitz. So we have...
Not the individuals, the tallies?
The tallies. We have three for Tina, three for Mark, two for her.
So, I think we have a, I'm sorry. I think we have a clear idea that we have three preferred candidates, and, and two folks who would very much be preferred candidates, given a less competitive group applying for the position. It was very, very, it's very nice to have so many well-qualified people asked to serve in this often thankless position. So, we like to thank those folks. So now we'll move around to the second round. We can, we can do this the same way, see who changes their votes, or we can... Any suggestions?
Yeah, I just want to say something, and I was thinking about this last night. Say something to the four people who aren't going to be picked. I met Scott two years ago. He and I were applying for a job, and neither of us were chosen. We're both sitting here as board directors. And to the four who don't get the job, do not give up. You can make an influence, and maybe you will even eventually wind up, gee, sitting here. Come back. There was a motto that I heard a long time ago, that said, "You have to run for office more than once. And the first time you run, you run to learn to do it. And the second time you run, you run for, for real." And Scott and I are proof that that's what happens. So, this is to the four of you, there's going to be four people who are nominally disappointed, although some of us think this is like golf, low score wins. But, that's just my comment, and I don't want you to get discouraged, those of you who aren't in the, in the fi, the final selectee, but keep going, because that's how you make a difference. You expecting me to do something?
No, no, no. I was just, I was just pondering. I think, the way I'd like to proceed from here, rather than just keep going around on the roll call vote, is just list the three names, and see how many votes they get that way. It's not much different, but...
Is that right?
Okay. Ashley, if you'd read the names, we'll then vote on those.
Just the three names, Mark Jorgensen, Tina. Just read this, and just go around and, okay.
Yeah. And then we'll just see how many we have, how many votes we have free to vote that way.
All right. Mark Jorgensen, Jorgensen? Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, who do we have?
Roll hands.
For Mark Jorgensen?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah, that's hard for him to do, isn't it?
Your hand, sorry. Get the votes.
Mr. Parker, on the second round, the three candidates were Tina McIntyre, Rick Rabinowitz, and Mark Jorgensen. Your vote?
Mark.
Mark.
All right. Got it. It was Patty, Bob, Chuck, and Bill. Well, Bill didn't raise his hand, but, or maybe he did. All right. Second, Tina McIntyre. We have Jim, Scott, Al, and Ashley. All right, and, so, that's it. There's no more room. Right. Fist fight? Foot race?
All right. This is the disadvantage of having a four, an even-numbered board, and this is not entirely unexpected, because we could just as easily, in a different circumstance, had it split three ways or four ways. So we do have two excellent candidates to do this. So what I would think is, I believe they're both in the audience, yes? Let's see it. Mark is not? Mark is not, okay.
Or is that Tina?
Okay. So then I won't, I won't disfavor one by having them speak again, or ask them additional questions, because they're not both here to do that. Good.
However... Mark, though, did send us a letter thanking us, and bringing up some other points, so maybe give her a moment, just to compensate for that, because that's, I mean, he wrote a letter saying, hey, I want to change my answer from last night, and here's some additional information, as we're going to keep it a fair playing field.
That's true. That's true.
I'm not talking about five or 10 minutes. I mean, like, I'm...
Right. Understood. I don't think anybody else, anybody here has that printed out. Would it be all right? You didn't get it on the email?
I could get it, I could get it for you.
If you wouldn't mind. That'd be great. The tenor of the, the tenor of the email was, that basically, he said, "Well, having had time to think about it, I would have liked to change this answer. I think I could have answered this better." And we're going to read that out, so everybody has a chance to see that, because it is public information, as far as I'm concerned.
Or I'm going to send that to the badge.
So, if you would care to make any comments to the board, change any answers, or provide any additional information, that you didn't get a chance to talk about last night, we'd love to hear it from you. Come up to the big table. Yeah, up to the big table.
So I really wouldn't change any answers, because the premise of my service is simply to serve. And it hasn't changed from, from last night. I just appreciate, you know, I thought too, it was really nice to have five people coming up to do this. It gives you such a good choice. And, so outside of that, I really don't, if you have any questions, or, you know, I'm happy to answer, but I, my answers remain the same.
Does, does anybody have any questions, any additional questions they would like to ask? All right, very good.
Thank you.
We're not quite at a stalemate anymore. We'll get there.
Are we allowed to deliberate?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I wasn't going to ask Tina anything. I just wanted to, to make a quick comment on this here. I feel that Tina's at a disadvantage, because she was sort of, this was thrown at her, whereas Mr. Jorgensen had a chance to go home, think about everything, mull everything over, write, possibly rewrite and rewrite until it sounded correct, and then send it to us.
I don't, I don't...
That's just the way I see it.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll just...
I mean, I just don't see how that's... I mean, Tina did fine. She didn't want to change anything, and that's fine. But, you know, everyone would like to, when have we not walked away from doing some kind of presentation, or something, and gone, ah, jeez, if I'd only said this, or that, or whatever? Any kind of interview. I don't know. I just don't like the way that played out.
Well, fair enough. I'll take that criticism. And the way I'll respond to it is, the fact that he did send in this letter, we did have it, it was knowledge that he did not present at the time, last night. And, at, at that point, it was wait, it was in his benefit, you know, he had this opportunity to change this answer, and that, once it's seen and read, can't be unseen and unread. So the only possible thing I could do to try and equalize that is to give Tina an equal opportunity. And the fact that I didn't, I didn't think to call ahead and, and tell her we might do this, because I wasn't sure where we'd be tonight, so I'll take that criticism as well. But, what I'm trying to do, what we're trying to do here tonight, is be as absolutely transparent. People who have been here, and watched previous boards go about their deliberations, have come away with the perception that perhaps the candidate was selected before people got here. I think it's pretty clear that we have not done that. Okay?
I'm with you on that 100%.
And this, this is the awkwardness that other people try and avoid. Well, I've been awkward my whole life. I live here. So, you know, we are just trying to come to a good decision that is transparent. And there's going to be a little bit of awkwardness, but I think we're, we're mature enough to get through that. As I said, we have two outstanding candidates, from a field of five outstanding candidates. We can't go wrong for the second time tonight, either way that we go. A lot of people don't like to give their thoughts on the deliberation. I will go ahead and do that, and let the chips fall where they may. I really like that your background, you have the, the business background. We have two engineers on, on the board, which I'm all for more engineers. And I think he's got a good, solid business background as well, that would serve him well. And so, it's, it's a coin toss. I can't go wrong on either way we go. In terms of the experience that he's got, he's coming from an outside, he's coming back to Pennsylvania, I guess he lived north of here, and McCunty, right? Laura McCunty? All right? And she moved away, and he was in Texas, and he's come back, and he's happy to be here, and happy to be part of it. And I think that's, that's a compelling story, and, and coming here to talk. Your story, I think, is, is also very wonderful. And the fact that you've had all these different experiences, and been that business manager, and done those things, that will help us. You know that we have a, a business manager who's well-versed in all of the different things, and has already saved $150,000 this year. Thank you. So, it, it, it only helps to have additional folks with, with a background like yours, to help to explain to the new folks, and those of us who don't do all that accounting, perhaps, the advantages of, of some of the business decisions that Mr. Nestor is advising us on. So, again, the broad range of experience that Mr. Jorgensen has, from the Naval Academy, to his naval career, and, you know, serving overseas, and his business, business background with gas company, and, and having moved around and worked in several different layers of their management, those are all strong things, that speak well to his ability to jump in and be able to hit the ground running, as will you. So, I've, I've tried to present out the case of where we are, I can't go wrong, I'm happy with either one of you winning. Okay? So, I'm not uncomfortable with us to keep going until somebody changes their mind for, for wanting to get out of here.
I just want to say, it's, it's a lot easier to sit here than, than there right now. But, no, I agree. Mark was fantastic. And, as a, as a community member, yeah, I, it's a great, I think it's a great situation to be in. You know, I really do, so...
I'll, I'll also go with my deliberation, because I had Tina as one, and Mark as two. So it's not like I'm going, you know, it's, it's one A, one B, and such. The only reason I had Tina on the top of the two was pretty much the exact reason why you said we can't have more engineers. I already have two engineers. I don't have an accountant-type person. I have two people that are well-versed in, in that type of field. I don't have her. The difference, for me, was that one applicant has been with the community, knows exactly how we're functioning, has kept in touch with all of our issues and such like that, whereas the other candidate pretty much just moved back to the community, and when asked certain questions, did not have any verse of the information. Hence, he said we had 60% of our budget was due to debt, and we had to correct them. Nothing wrong, I'm sure he'd catch up like that, he's a director of a company, I'm sure it would be no problem for him. But he just was not at the point where I thought he would be that up and running individual, versus Tina would be an up and running individual.
Something, they were both excellent candidates, there's no doubt about it. You know, I have four children, and I try to, you know, have them grow up in such a way that, you know, I feel pride in them, but that they feel pride in me as well. And we've had Mason for two years, and I think that, I mean, that says a lot to me. You know, that, you know, Mason was, you know, from, you know, and he was, how wonderful he turned out. So I think, obviously, she had a fair amount to do with that, I would say. So, I, I mean, it is something that, it says a lot to know that, you know, a great parent. So, this probably assuaged me as well.
There are two points. One, you're a recent empty Nestor. My kids left school, my last kid graduated in 1999, which meant that the kids that I had, who went to this school district, their teachers are gone, they're retired. Your, your contacts are still fresh. So that will be useful. I mean, if I want to look at my, the kids who went to the middle school, the old middle school, if I want to go and talk to them, I, I have, literally have to go to the cemetery. You have contacts that are still useful. When I came to this board, I was on the board for like, two minutes, and I realized that I'm at a deficit. The other thought that occurs to me, and I hope this doesn't strike people as cynical, is the 1912 Democratic Convention, which went for 104 votes.
You weren't there, right?
I don't... I missed it.
You knew it.
And, you know, maybe I wa, maybe it's incorrect for me to call for a vote, but I think we ought to try to bring this to a conclusion, and not go for that many votes. They nominated Woodrow Wilson.
Would somebody care to make a motion, to put a single person's name, nominate a single person, so we can vote on that person, see if we get a majority?
I would like to motion for Tina.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for Tina. Does anybody have any questions? Sorry, being facetious. If not, then, all those in favor of voting Tina onto the board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
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 Okay, six to two, we have a consensus. Tina, welcome, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're not going to do the wave. I draw the line.
Next.
Square, dis-squared.
I will ask...
We have it.
You do?
We're seven.
I'm going to ask.
We're not going to do the wave. I draw the line.
Are we going to square today, or next?
Square.
Square.
I will ask.
We have it.
You do?
We're seven.
I'm going to ask. If she wants to.
I told you, you have a choice.
She wants to.
We'd like to have done tonight.
Should we?
Yes.
Congratulations.
We look forward to working with you.
Watch your step.
What's that?
She thinks it's a no.
Right.
You do?
We're seven. I'm going to ask if she wants to. We look forward to working out, so watch your step. Okay, so we'll.
Yeah. Next meeting.
All right. Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. Mason. Excuse me, Mason. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
I do support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we started off slowly, but I think we finished up smartly and very well. Again, for the 15th time, I would like to thank all of the members that came out of the community who came out and applied for this and subjected themselves to the interviews and the discussions and the deliberations. We truly, truly appreciate it and we wish to see all of you again, perhaps in February. So that's everything I have. Do we have any additional?
I, I just want to, as an observer in this process, I just, I just really, and Bob, you mentioned it, but I just want to thank you for your transparency. That, that type of, the vision that you supplied, being out front with the whole community is a great foundational piece for us as an organization. So as that, as the leader of that piece, I, I appreciate that fidelity and the forthrightness that you put into the process and I think it, it showed here tonight, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. He did. We have a, is there anything we need? Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second and no questions from the lawyer, so. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And thank you all very much.
part of it and the committee's going to finish the other part. We're all in on this together, right? So Mr. Renzo began the meeting by following up on previous co-curricular meeting. This was the intent to sell tickets at all home.